Very well attended, sold out. And it just provided the opportunity for a number of very interesting conversations and dialogues with many community members. I think we had over sixty people there. We learned about people who are in the community, who I know, who have expressed their own homelessness journeys. And it really just brought everything home, that there are so many different stories with regards to homelessness. And also Lieutenant Smith was able to present that evening with resources for the community. And I think that in the end, it really went to show how far we've come in the last number of years in creating a system of care in Huntington Beach. And being able to talk about that with our neighbors and really changing the conversation, I think, was just a really important opportunity. And I'm excited for next season, hopefully which will begin, I imagine, in the fall. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Not for this portion of the meeting, no.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
That's a no. None.
Okay, so now we'll move on to study session. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. This afternoon, we have a study session on parking. I'd like to introduce to my left Planning Manager Matt Schneider and Associate Planner Tess Nguyen, who will be helping to answer any questions you might have. Towards the end, after I make a few brief opening remarks, I will introduce our consultant, who will be presenting this afternoon. So, the catalyst for tonight's study session really was generated by COVID and the use of parking for outdoor dining. I know largely to this point, our recent conversations on this topic have generated around downtown, but we really had this situation citywide. And in particular, there was a distillery in the industrial area that brought this issue to the city's attention. This complex is largely an eight-to-five kind of complex, with the exception of this distillery that was serving food in the evening hours where there was a lot of vacant parking. The general experience that we had during COVID, where parking spaces, again, all over town were being utilized for non-parking uses, was positive. We didn't receive a lot of complaints about lack of parking. And this coupled with an almost decade-long emergence of new ways to access goods and services, such as Uber, Lyft, car sharing, micro-transit, and it seems like a new emergence of e-bikes. Those two things coupled together generated an interest to explore and update to the city's minimum parking standards. These standards were created a long time ago without the benefit of contemporary modes of transportation and recent land use patterns. One of the largest complaints we received from the business community when they're going through the process to try to open is complying with our parking requirements. So, it seemed like a good time to evaluate our citywide parking standards, which are often mimicked from other communities. Parking standards come from the ITE manual, which I will let our parking consultant give you the acronym for that. But it's a manual where you're looking at kind of standalone uses and the parking that they might generate. And there's a lot of things that are not taken into account when those minimum parking standards are created. Downtown has been recognized as sort of a different type of area. It's a shared parking district, sort of a park-once parking district, meaning that we have multiple public parking structures, and we have a lot of public parking in that area, where the idea is that someone would park once and attend multiple businesses with their car staying in that same vehicle, unlike a retail strip center where you will drive there, go to the business you're coming, and then drive your car to the next business that you're going to. And so, the study that we procured looks at downtown from a slightly different perspective. Staff did conduct a request for proposals, and we retained Walker Consultants to conduct this parking study. So, this is just a study of where we are today, and asked for some recommendations of whether any of our parking standards should be changed, so that will be discussed. And also, any recommendations for downtown, in particular, understanding, do we have a supply issue? Meaning, is there a lack of supply based on the current demand and sort of projected demand based on what's allowed in the downtown-specific plan? Or is it more of a parking management issue? So, that information will be shared with you shortly. I did want to do a quick introduction to Walker Consultants. They are a nearly sixty-year nationwide parking planning, design, and restoration firm. They have offices, municipal clients, and multiple parking structures throughout Orange County and Southern California. Stefan, which Stefan was very careful to make sure I had the correct pronunciation of his last name, and I helped me out. Well, I did want to say that.
Turaf, yeah.
Thank you. Stefan Turaf has been doing this work with Walker for nearly nineteen years, including several engagements with the City of Huntington Beach since 2015. So, he's intimately familiar with our parking situation, particularly in downtown. But Stefan has also worked with almost every coastal city in Southern California. And this is important because the California Coastal Commission is particularly interested in coastal parking in the coastal zone, which our downtown is within the coastal overlay district. So, I did want to be sure that you were aware of that experience, and I will now turn it over to Stefan to present their findings.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem. Again, I'm Stefan Turaf, I'm Director of Planning for Walker. We're a long-time, originally parking engineering firm, and really now heavily into the planning. As to provide parking, we see that planning is an operating, and the regulations are all part of the parking experience, excuse me, for the public. So, today, we have a lot of detail in here, but this is a study session. So, we also want to cast something of a broad net to give you some context. We'll talk, well, Ursula, I just spoke about the study purpose and the focus areas. Citywide, we looked at, you have a big city here, as you know. We also looked at the industrial areas, which were very interesting. I've been coming here since 1981, I think, visiting family and eating and going to stores. I had not spent much time in the industrial areas, but this was part of our study. And then, of course, downtown and near the water by the pier. So, study purpose and focus. Where are there opportunities and concerns? Again, industrial area, downtown, and the appropriateness. You know, we talked about, you know, what is the right number for requiring parking? And parking requirements tend to be rigid, you know, they are a number. And, you know, you have sub-districts, sub-areas, but they need to apply to specific businesses all across the city, you know, for, say, a restaurant. And you could have restaurants with, you know, different numbers of tables, different types of clientele. You know, we talked about deliveries these days, Uber, Lyft. A parking requirement tends to be rigid, and we want to do our best to get it right. Make sure this is reasonable for your needs. And, you know, economic development and parking, this is something that we wrestle with all the time. We do get inquiries very often from developers, business owners, who are struggling with a municipal parking requirement. You know, people very often think somebody will open a business, and then they'll look at how much parking is required, and they'll create that parking, they'll build that parking, they'll lease that parking, they'll make sure it's there. But we do come across a number of businesses that just cannot satisfy the parking requirement. Or, as we'll get into here a little bit, it's vague, you know, can they go for variance? Can they, you know, what can they change? And once you have the process of opening a business or building a store, once questions are raised, it takes time, and people get skittish, and they back off from that. So, we do see that parking requirements can get in the way of a change of use, of new business, and we want to be sensitive to that. So, is parking a hindrance to the flexibility? To the fact that businesses are different, and business owners and developers often have a pretty good idea of what they need to open their business? I do want to say, it's a tough call, you know, what does the city require? What does the business or developer know they need? We want to hit the right middle ground there. So, we collected data, and as we said, this is a big city. We had my colleague Jeff Weckstein, graduated from UC Irvine ten years ago, he's a traffic engineer. We talked about parking requirements coming from the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, Jeff spent a lot of time citywide, I spent some. I was really focused on the industrial area because it was the part of Huntington Beach that I was not so familiar with. And of course, the downtown, which I think everyone in the region is really familiar with. But we sampled, we looked at different businesses, restaurants. A term, "metaspa," sort of aesthetic spas, something like a medical office, which we came across and can generate a fair demand of parking in small retail areas. Again, we looked through your standards, and we compared them to a lot of data we have. We do an update every five, seven years or so for the International Council of Shopping Centers. And we and other parking consultants, and there are several out there, go out and collect data nationwide. We're particularly well-represented here in Southern California, in suburban Southern California. And we look at, you know, a restaurant, how many restaurants are, you know, generating how much parking? For retail, typically, we look at the twentieth busiest hour of the year, which falls about a week before the holidays. Not all retail operates that way, but a lot of the big malls, the regional malls, even things like businesses like CVS and supermarkets will operate that way. For health clubs, and we looked at health clubs. When do health clubs peak by far in terms of parking demand? In January. And it's fascinating, that is very consistent. You see a high demand for parking at health clubs in January, and then it just peters off, and that's how they do their business. But we see that, we see there are patterns. So, we compared, we did counts here, you know, we couldn't survey the whole city, but we also compared it to our data. The industrial district, we looked at the very interesting, different businesses that come into the industrial district, and new uses, which we want to promote. You know, we saw children's play areas, which I was there on a weekend, you see families coming, and you see a lot of what's going on there. But that's, but they come at the time that the industrial uses aren't so busy. And then, of course, downtown. So, determining appropriate parking requirements. Parking is the terminal capacity for transportation, right? We have right-of-way, the roads, we have vehicles, the cars, and we have terminal capacity, the parking. Economic development, parking is land and capital-intensive, and we can't get away from the fact that typically, you have something of a finite supply. Certainly on-street, you have a lot of, the fact that you have a lot of red curb actually helps you in a lot of ways manage your parking. We want to be accurate and simplify the parking requirement code. You know, I looked at many, many parking requirements throughout the area. I was scratching my head a lot, sometimes calling or emailing with staff for explanations. If that's what I'm going through, what is a business trying to open? Or developer trying to build something going through? We want to simplify as much as possible and be accurate. Parking as a public space, we talked about how it's being used these days for restaurants overall, it's been popular. Shared parking, when you get a bunch of different uses together, often that increases your efficiencies. So, let me, I think I'm going long here, but let me just go through this. We made observations and did counts, restaurants, these metaspas, you know, the retail centers, office buildings, which are very interesting because people are spending less time in offices these days. There are a few exceptions, but pretty much we're seeing that across the board. And yet, there's this parking requirement. Even, you know, our offices, everybody there at the same time these days, like they were three, four years ago? No, there are fewer cars. Restaurants had a wide range of needs. Again, we see more delivery for establishments that serve alcohol. You know, we see more people using Uber and Lyft. Last month, Newport Beach adjusted their requirements in the coastal area, specifically citing Uber and Lyft. And we also have to think, for establishments that serve alcohol, do we want to provide a lot of parking? That's always come up. It's come up in the same way with gyms, you know, are people more active? Are they driving as much? All that comes into play. So, another one, retail centers, office developments, we found had ample parking. Overall, and that's the problem with the parking requirement. We all remember our few issues, parking at a certain center, but when we make a parking requirement, it's for a chunk of the city. And we have to figure out, if there's a problem in a few places, do we make a rule that covers a lot of areas? So, I don't want to go into this, we talked about this, these were some of the recommendations we made. Mentioned health club, mentioned that we found that health club typically is a higher requirement than what you had. We went down through here, looking at the data we collected, the data we collect overall for suburban areas, comparing it to your code requirement. We have the ULI, that's the Urban Land Institute, they are the ones who cooperate with the International Council of Shopping Centers. And again, these are suburban requirements. And we went forward and we made recommendations based on the data, but also trying to be mindful of economic development needs. The industrial district, again, was very interesting. We found a lot of parking out there. Now, there are places where the street parking fills up. But one thing we've discovered is you can require more and more and more parking, and very often, people still, a certain number of drivers will drive to the street first. So, if you see problems on the street and you say, well, let's just require more parking, first of all, that is a hit on the business, sometimes it's necessary, they need to provide parking. But on the other hand, if you want, if you have street parking issues, very often, it's about managing the street. And we did see in some of your industrial areas, you have one hour and other time restrictions out there. At the same time, though, we saw more evenings and weekends, much of the time, there is plenty of parking out there. I would say there's acres and acres out there. Like I said, you know, there were several more recreational uses, children's parties on Saturday and Sunday morning, and it was great, you know. So many uses, we see, if you want to do a standalone use, you could not afford the land and the capital expense of parking. Shared parking is really important that way. And we saw a great opportunity in the industrial district. Houses of worship was another example. And we do parking planning for churches. And churches have a tough time, right? They have huge demand Sunday morning, and six and a half days a week, they have plenty of parking. So, typically, you try to do a shared use, or they have a lot of land and a lot of expense that sits there. It's hard to do that. So, the industrial district, we thought, there's really an opportunity to be a little more flexible. You know, we saw the breweries, the distilleries, as I mentioned, churches, children's activities. There's a real asset there that the community and, you know, the businesses can take advantage of. And I will say this, you know, when we talked to staff about some of the issues here, it wasn't so much about a lack of parking in these areas, it was interpreting the code. Again, we want to be, we want to be simple and easy to understand here. Last bullet on here, we found mixed-use industrial center parking was less than fifty percent full. Now, were there some vacancies? Most certainly. But that's all, that's acres and acres of unproductive land out there for you. So, we recommended for industrial area, you know, a catch-all, one parking requirement for those non-industrial uses. If things really look unusual for the area, given current zoning, you know, that you could have a parking study. That happens a lot, but you want to make the process clear. Let's see, eliminate additional parking requirements for change of use in the existing industrial area. Am I going long? Let's see, okay. Time, 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 okay. Well, let's see, downtown, again, I think we all know, in the region, you have a lot of public spaces, publicly available private spaces, which typically tend to charge a little more. Other spaces, like the beach lots, and that's an interesting one, how all that comes into play. And as you know, this was weekday parking occupancy in the summer. There is some demand, you see the red areas, effectively, there's no supply available, people all parked up. But there are, this is really about allocation. And we see this all up and down the coast. Newport Beach is certainly this way, you know, Hermosa, Redondo, Manhattan. Even weekdays in the summer, it's hard, but there's a little availability. But then you get to weekend, and boom. And that's so often what forms the perceptions. But again, weekend parking is at, you know, twelve, fifteen, twenty weekends a year? How often does this happen? Do we build for that? You know, is there a place to build for that? And that's huge capital and maintenance costs. So, you see, the on-street parking, a hundred percent full, the public parking, ninety-two percent full, almost effectively full. But the private parking, fifty-three percent full. There were spaces out there, do people know how to find them? Were they made available? Private parking is always what's left over. Here you see the demand, weekday, it's peaking at lunchtime. People probably from the area say, hey, let's go down and get lunch, you know, during the workday, that's great. And there is some availability on the weekday, so that's good. Weekend, and we see this all throughout Southern California, and I'm surprised when I see it, four PM is typically the peak. And it's high. So, you have about forty-five hundred spaces out there, about four thousand are full. The question is finding them and utilizing them. So, downtown recommendations, we understand just last, just last month, I believe, parking prices were increased downtown. I believe in some locations, we would have to look at that to see if that is the type of demand base that we would like to see to address, to address those summer weekend issues. As you increase rates, we would say, use those, use that revenue to fund access improvements. We talk about downtown valet. It isn't for everybody, but the good thing about valet is you park at the curb, and then that valet knows where to find those hidden spaces, maybe through an agreement with a private operator. So, basically, we want to, if you raise revenue, invest it back in there to improve the area. There is an in-lu fee program where instead of a parking requirement, you pay a fee. Again, how can we use that to increase access to the area? We talked about Coastal Commission at the outset, and, you know, Coastal wants to see more access. So, whatever we can do to improve that, I'm giving a very brief summary, but that's what we'd like to do. So, we want to finalize these recommendations, reach out to stakeholders, including downtown, create a zone and text amendment for the local coastal program, and then we'd go back to you with that action. Did I get through? I got through.
You did. I just wanted to quickly add that in downtown in particular, where it's built out, one of the issues has to do with, our parking standards are currently use-based. So, if you're a retail tenant, you have a different parking requirement than an office tenant, different parking requirement than a gym-type use. And so, once downtown's built out, once you've built your space and your associated parking to begin with, it becomes difficult, if there's a change of use that has a higher parking standard, how are you going to build that parking, right? The developer already built the project, they built the associated parking, they don't have any more land, there's no other place for them to build this parking. So, it becomes an economic development issue. And there's actually a really interesting article I saw many years ago, it was a case study on Wilshire Boulevard, where half of Wilshire was in one town and the other half was in the other town.
And that's so often what forms the perceptions. But again, weekend parking, is that, you know, 12, 15, 20 weekends a year? How often does this happen? Do we build for that? You know, is there a place to build for that? And that's huge capital and maintenance costs. So you see, the on-street parking, 100% full, the public parking, 92% full, almost effectively full. But the private parking, 53% full. There were spaces out there. Do people know how to find them? Were they made available? Private parking is always what's left over. Here you see the demand. Weekday, it's peaking at lunchtime. People probably from the area say, hey, let's go down and get lunch, you know, during the workday, that's great. And there is some availability on the weekday, so that's good. Weekend, and we see this all throughout Southern California, and I'm surprised when I see it, 4:00 PM is typically the peak, and it's high. So you have about 4,500 spaces out there, about 4,000 are full. The question is finding them and utilizing them. So downtown recommendations, we understand just last month, I believe, parking prices were increased downtown, I believe, in some locations. We would have to look at that to see if that is the type of demand base that we would like to see to address those summer weekend issues. As you increase rates, we would say, use that revenue to fund access improvements. We talk about downtown valet. It isn't for everybody, but the good thing about valet is you park at the curb, and then that valet knows where to find those hidden spaces, maybe through an agreement with a private operator. What was I going to say? So basically, we want to, if you raise revenue, invest it back in there to improve the area. There is an in-loofy program where instead of a parking requirement, you pay a fee. Again, how can we use that to increase access to the area? We talked about Coastal Commission at the outset, and, you know, Coastal wants to see more access. So whatever we can do to improve that, I'm giving a very brief summary, but that's what we'd like to do. So we want to finalize these recommendations, reach out to the stakeholders, including downtown, create a zone and text amendment for the local coastal program, and then we'd go back to you with that action. Did I get through? I got through.
You did. I just wanted to quickly add that in downtown in particular, where it's built out, one of the issues has to do with when our parking standards are currently use-based. So if you're a retail tenant, you have a different parking requirement than an office tenant, different parking requirement than a gym-type use. And so, once downtown's built out, once you've built your space and your associated parking to begin with, it becomes difficult, if there's a change of use that has a higher parking standard, how are you going to build that parking? Right? The developer already built the project, they built the associated parking, they don't have any more land, there's no other place for them to build this parking. So it becomes an economic development issue. And there's actually a really interesting article I saw many years ago, is a case study on Wilshire Boulevard, where half of Wilshire was in one town and the other half was in the other town. One half of Wilshire Boulevard, they took away this use-based parking standard, and they just created this one rate for all types of businesses. The other side of the street did not do that, and what did they find? A number of vacancies on the one side of the street that was use-based, while the other side of the street had no vacancies. So that's how impactful parking requirements can be on economic development and business tenant, turnover of business tenants. So with that, we wanted to see if you had any questions, and we're available to answer those.
Wouldn't the council be able to exempt or deal with that issue if that issue was brought to us at the time?
I will defer to the city attorney's office, but before that, say, that would be on an ad hoc basis. We have a zoning code that tells us how to apply our rules and regulations on kind of all businesses. So I would think there might need to be something put in the code to do that. I think the Coastal Commission might have a big problem with that for the area where they have jurisdiction. I have never seen sort of an ad hoc sort of parking requirement done that way, and at this point, I'll defer to the city attorney's office.
Yeah, that's just something that we'd have to take a look at, especially in the coastal.
Thank you for the presentation. In this business myself, go to ICSC every year for my convention. Based on our projects, to me, I mean, a catch-all is interesting for industrial, but I really think probably the most prudent solution would just be allowing projects to submit a parking study, because every use is going to be slightly different. Every project has its own unique characteristics. So maybe that's something to keep in mind if we can, you know, allow these submissions of parking studies. They're not terribly expensive, but at least it'd be very specific for the type of use and or tenant that wants to go in a certain project.
Thank you. Haven't been dealing with parking now since 2008 to see the same report, again, effectively for downtown, that there's plenty of parking except for 30 days a year. There's a spot for everybody, and I guess the public policy question is, should we build parking for the 30 worst days of the year? In my opinion, probably not, right? We should build it for the second or third standard deviation of there's enough. And I think the draw downtown is big enough that folks know or assume there's not going to be parking. But you poll folks in the community and ask them how many parking structures we have downtown. Two, they'll say, but there's five, if you include the beach lot. So, I mean, that are at least public or semi-public. So interesting, again, to see that the data hasn't changed much, and to what Ursula spoke Interesting to see that the use-based parking code is, I think, somewhat, we've kind of run into the brick wall on it, I guess, that we have all the parking spots we're going to have, and if we just, if the public policy needs to be, let anybody want to come in, can come in, and the demand will be the demand, and folks will have to figure out how to get down there. And I think downtown is kind of a microcosm for that, at least for the commercial side, that it's a draw, and they'll take Uber and Lyft or the bus or any other type of mode, ride their bike or whatever downtown. So I think that bringing those bike parking, those types of things into consideration, and I think there was some discussion of some parking under the pier for bikes that we can, you know, obviously add to that. And then, to the industrial space, the research and technology zone, we went, you know, took that from its nascent phase all the way to the end, and then the revision of it. You know, I talked to some folks during COVID, and, I mean, the industrial area is effectively dead after 5 o'clock, and it's a big inefficient use of space after 5 o'clock. And I talked to some of the breweries that are actually up there, and, you know, we'd love to put a kitchen in, but the city requires 80 parking spots, but if you look around, there's a bunch of street parking. And be interested, I don't think anybody else meters their industrial area, but I think that better land use controls that way would be really helpful, especially with the R and T zone. And again, one of the other requirements that we have, obviously, is in the R and T zone, there's not enough restaurants. And one of the complaints we had from the industrial areas is you got to drive 30 minutes to go get food. And so I think one of the considerations would be, if the restaurant users want to go in there, what their parking requirements are and what that looks like in the during, you know, for the lunch rush, and if, obviously, delivery spaces and, you know, short-term turnover spaces versus, you know, what does that look like at 5 or 6 o'clock? To Councilmember McKeon's point of creating, you know, parking studies, I think that we probably want to have a threshold before you need to kick that in. Obviously, my belief is that the city should do as much work for the business as possible so that it's easy for them to pick and choose, but I think having every business or every application have to go into a parking study would be, I mean, we want to try to raise that bar. So if you've got that use case.
Kind of more where you were talking about in industrial parks, it's kind of like a hybrid, right? Like midday and then after night? So it'd be kind of interesting to see what kind of, you know, parking studies in that regard.
Yeah, because I think, you know, again, like, I'm slowly but surely getting to that, you know, parking minimums are stifling business at this point, especially in the coastal zone, they're $40,000, $50,000 of space. And the downtown, you know, you're not going to add additional parking spots unless you've got dirt, and that's effectively stopping projects. So, you know, I think that parking minimums, at least in commercial and industrial, need to look at. I did my Black Friday drive, again, to go look at all our shopping centers, to see how full the parking lots were on the busiest shopping day of the year, and they're all empty. So, I mean, we have an enormous amount of asphalt in this city that's not being utilized. And I think the state has an idea of what that can be used for, but if we don't assert our local control for that and incentivize businesses to come to our city, when they say, you know, we're going to need 40 parking spots, or, you know, a restaurant downtown wants to add some more tables, but they're going to need 10 more parking spots, our revenue, you know, our math is all based on parking. And I think that because our city's flat and easily accessible via bike and Uber and Lyft and whatnot, that we could definitely have economic incentives if our parking standards were, I think, not as aggressive as they are, especially in the overly built-out areas. And then, I think, the industrial part, some notes would be the landscape companies that come in. All the guys come in, bring their trucks in and park all over the streets, and then get in their work trucks and then go places. You know, that's, I think, a consideration that we need to look at for the agriculture businesses up there. And then, I think I've spoken to Ursula about the, we don't want to shunt folks out of the industrial area into the residential areas. I know that Frontier is getting ready to close their facility there and start doing home dispatch, so we're going to start seeing work trucks in the communities. And then, we're also seeing work trucks in the community already where it's cheaper for contractors to go buy houses. So I don't know, is part of that discussion for what we're doing parking. We don't want to see, we don't want to move people out of the industrial area where they've got their five work trucks into residential, you know, next to their house because it's free parking overnight to that. So be mindful of what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the study. Just on the one note that you mentioned, that we recently increased rates and fees downtown, and I just wanted to make sure that, though we've already done that, that we ensure that those, this data and this study is considered in our fee increases and that it's responsive to the findings in this study. Because in the end, our goal is, from what it sounds like, parking management downtown, and we want to make sure that the fees are not just increased to meet the level that they should right now, but that they are responsive to the times of day that the parking is being used. So I just would like to have staff make sure that we are doing that as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So I think you and I, Councilmember Moser, we're thinking along the same lines with demand-based pricing. So I'm taking, so when I read the comment about understanding the impact of the recent increase and whether that does create the necessary nexus between the demand and pricing, I take it we don't know the answer to that question for these most recent increases yet. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Anything else, members? Thank you so much for the hard work.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think essentially, we were hoping for understanding if there was interest from the city council to further dive into these issues. It would be a big lift to do some of these things, and we don't want to spend the time and resources doing that if there isn't an inclination of the city council to look at parking moving forward. But what I would suggest maybe is that we table that for the strategic planning session, where you're able to look at, you know, competing needs and the resources available.
Great. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, definitely. But then also, Ursula, if you, you know, know, or if you have data on hand of how many, I don't know, projects in the last year have had challenges meeting parking requirements, that would also help when we have our strategic planning session. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Members, we're now going to closed session announcement. We're conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957.6. Agency designation representatives are Al Zelenka City Manager, Peter Brown, Chief Negotiator. Also in attendance are Jose Rodriguez, Human Resources Manager, Teresa St. Peter, interim Director of Human Resources, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Michael Gates, City Attorney, Eric Parra, Chief of Police, Sunny Hahn, Acting C, Chief Financial Officer. And employee organization is Police Management Association, PMA. Do I hear a motion and a second to go to closed session? If it moved and seconded, we're going to closed session.